Because.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about.
Correctly in a concerned sentence.
Right.
Turns up.
It's just not knowing.
It's a loner, so I'm not used to the sound.
Yeah.
I get a new one later this week.
Mr. Azal, I'm questioning you.
Yeah.
I see your response on that. So. On this appeal for Dudley's following made of this. Is there a reason that that complaint? You want me to share that and you want me to front office that and? Send it back to us? Why is it being deals?
Uh, that's a good question.
Okay, good, no one tells you, yeah, because it should have come back to us. There's a discrepancy in my special business that we issued.
The reason it's coming to us today is because there was a complaint about parking that came in here. They got referred to it.
Not your house, right?
So we have to address that.
Parking around at your house.
We can't address anything. It's going from the VBA. It's not doing anything.
Oh, it hasn't been there yet?
It doesn't go there until twenty.
Oh, well, we will have to table that unless Paul has specific questions, but.
The way I read this, the isn't the the complaint, Lon Harton.
The complaint is on the fact that people park for the said he wasn't supposed to. That's what had to be addressed.
But is that was not the appeal to? No, no, it's not. Why isn't that shown?
Well, yet for what's tonight, I didn't know any more than you guys do. I've only gotten marks in the pocket.
Great, thanks. For the.
Okay, so. I use an appeal, but because we approved it.
It'll be the second Thursday next week.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess they have not appealed it because of the.
No, it would be you to exhaust the complaint about parking shit.
See, I feel it's great. I haven't seen it.
I don't know what the appeal's based on.
Sorry, are you so you don't have any answer? Yes, you. I've just never seen it. It's like.
Do you have it? Just asking?
No, I do not have for the ZBA. I do not know exactly what they are.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. I've got a bunch. I'm just.
Um, yes, your item number four under new business parking complaint and investigation. So that's the thing, Alvin. Do we go in down to the parking department? Or we just make sure it goes all Dudley has information to do is could prepare for them.
I assume once later. Say, maybe you're doing. Parking until the appeals. I don't, I mean, why are we going to deal with the parking? You know, I.
No, it's not an appeal on parking.
Like, that's what I'm kidding. They have an appeal. So if they have an appeal on the. Why do you own parking? Because obviously we're going to.
Well, if they don't, then. If they say it's okay to have.
Then.
Is not.
Then we go back. Then we go back. So it's. Scratch into when we change. Then we make change for some slot. Validated. Then we can give you still a slot. That's. Well, I've dealt before thirty days messing with the slot.
Oh.
This seems to me we're wasting our time on.
I didn't hear anything about it until it showed up in the email. And I don't know much more.
Well, I'm not sure what it's even about. I haven't seen anything. I just heard. I was thinking it was over the parking.
Well, Tammy hit the stuff. Did you see Tammy?
But it doesn't say what the. Doesn't say what the appeal.
No, it doesn't address the appeal. It addresses the issue tonight.
And I get the issue tonight, though. Why do you understand what it is? You know.
This recorded, she sent July twenty second.
Yeah.
That's that's what we addressed tonight. It just. Saying they didn't initial anything else except.
And that's a little bit of that's mine. I just want to say. While you're kind of having to feel like you're proof of the slot, it's possible to. Because we might have to go back to.
Can ask Tammy. But this this thing in is a complaint, so it's it's kind of like gray areas of the separate issues.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I don't know who's.
Because if it's not a separate issue, then feeling is that's much, then why are we going to?
One question. I mean, that's why it feels.
Is there's three years. Special use permit? There's three things that you're supposed to. Or to call this in the eyes. They did not fill with three things. So I only. There are three things that you're supposed to have. In order to be able to file.
I we were on vacation for three weeks and came back and. Kind of playing catch up for that kind of stuff, but I didn't get any notice. If I have that on. Does he agree with you for tonight?
Yeah. I agree with you if it's if it's on. No, why go through it?
Parking is not under appeal. The commitment we went through.
It is. Let's go until that's settled.
We shouldn't go inside. Yes. This is great, but what we should do is make sure. That Paul Dudley has all the information he needs to be ready for that.
Greater. You can be like a same. That has just been gone. And that was a bucket. That's what they want. All right. Well, you can now own your job, you know, that. That's just.
We're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with roll call. Mr. Maskey?
Here.
Fletcher?
Here.
It's here.
Here.
Hopmans. There's a. Did you guys all get a chance to go over the? Agenda and look at it so we can approve tonight's agenda for the review? Did everything look correct on the agenda?
Yeah, I the only thing I noticed was there was no mention of the blight. Uh, updates that were. Proposed or from the last meeting, but we do have it on the agenda tonight, so probably no need to.
So you're good?
I'm good.
Go with it. Mr. Fletcher?
I'm good with it.
Uh, all eyes eye.
I'm.
Hi, all right.
Did you guys all go through the minutes from last week's meeting?
Sorry, I was off. Yeah, that's what I meant to say. I was on the. Meeting minutes don't reflect the blight.
Oh, meaning minutes.
Meaning, yeah, sorry. Meeting minutes don't reflect, but. Right, but they're already on the agenda, so I don't see a need to add any more verbiage. We can prove it as is.
Other than that, you're good with the minutes?
Yeah.
Um.
That's the most.
I just lost. I just lost it here.
So just to be clear, we did approve the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Azal.
Right here. But the PCA was of the mind that the reclamation plan and the site plan are the same thing. That's not true.
It was said.
That is not true.
At the meeting at the time. And that's what how it got in there.
Well, it it's not true.
Because.
Because.
Special steps to point out the difference between the two. To clarify that for us.
Well, I don't like you telling people that I don't know the difference.
It's.
Because I know what the reclamation plan and I know what a site plan is.
Well, your name's.
And they are both different.
Your name's not.
But I'm a planning commission member, and this just says planning commission. Is of a mind that the reclamation plan and the site plan are the same thing.
They were on the same document.
They might have been on the same.
Will you do that?
But saying that we say we think they're the same thing is not right.
So you're saying we would want? To cross that out and have it amended to say that the? Site plan and reclamation plan was on the same document.
That I can live with.
So I guess I I can make a motion that? The meeting minutes be updated, that you would line out the existing information.
If you're updating or changing, what what's your word?
Changing.
Amending.
Amending. The meeting minutes. To line out. That the planning commission was of the that the reclamation and site plan were the same document. And you would add that the planning commission identified that the? Site plan and reclamation plan were on the same document. And that's what the that's what the drawings reflect, right?
Yes.
Line out was of the mind.
Yeah.
And replace it with.
That the. Reclamation site plan.
Gentlemen, the zoning administrator had to take great pains to clarify that at that meeting. And at previous meetings. So we can't change the fact that that happened.
We identify that they were on the same document. When you pull out those drawings, it says site plan slash reclamation ban, doesn't it? That's all we're saying is they're on the same document. We're saying we know there's a difference, but they're on the same document. We would need a second to that motion.
A second.
Make sure I get it right here. Just a minute. So your motion is to amend the meeting minutes to line out. PC was of the mind and put that the site plan and reclamation plan was on the same deck.
Correct. You say document slash drawing, whatever, but same documents, fine.
Was there a second?
Yeah, it's all saying that. After that. Doing well, yeah, yes.
Maskey?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
No.
Anything else, guys, on these two? Make a motion.
At the end of the meeting, I have to do one of these. That I turn in. Don't let me forget.
I would like to make a motion. We approve the minutes. With the changes.
With the changes made. So you've so Leland will have to update him and get with you to sign them, right?
So.
I signed them, but I got the copy here to correct.
She'll correct it. Well, second. Roll call, Maskey?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes. Yeah, change that we made. Yeah.
Jersey. All right, so. Then it's sort of. Public comment at this time? If we're gonna move. Uh, close the planning commission meeting, open a special public. Uh, hearing.
I make a motion to close the. Planning commission meeting.
A second.
Roll call eyes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right.
And I make a motion to open the special hearing.
Second it. Roll call eyes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right. New light champ, uh, child family institutional proposal for conditional rezoning of properties of agricultural residential to commercial. Partial identification number is zero one seven dash zero one seven dash zero zero dash one six zero zero dash zero zero. Located at fifty three ninety seven Millington Road, Millington, Michigan. So. Uh, Arizona administrator sent us all a packet on it, but she had typed up. With her recommendation on it and.
Right now we're public comment, though. We probably just do the public comment.
Did I read the recommendation?
I'm asking you if you'd like me to read the recommendation.
If you want to read it, then go for it.
Or do we do that? I I do we right now, we or do we do that once we open our other meeting backup? That's all I'm asked for clarity on that. Because it's public comment.
She's gonna read it, then we'll do.
Report is not public. The zoning administrator's report is part of his.
Right, so she's gonna read it and then we'll do public comment after that.
Okay.
And then we'll close it back out then.
So I did send you my formal recommendation, and I want to stand here before you today and urge the planning commission to recommend approval of the proposed conditional rezoning agreement submitted by New Light Child Family Institute. The agreement, if approved, will bring the property into compliance with township zoning regulations by rezoning the parcel from agricultural residential to commercial, subject to voluntary and binding conditions. The current use of the property as a behavioral health and counseling center constitutes a prior non-conforming commercial use under section fifteen point oh one of the zoning ordinance. The owner seeks to expand the existing building, which would constitute an unlawful expansion of a nonconformity unless the property is rezoned. The conditional rezoning agreement has been voluntarily offered by the owner in accordance with article twenty one of the zoning ordinance. I did highlight the key ordinance compliance elements in my recommendation. That includes the site plan review requirements, the required green belt information, parking and loading requirements, signage, as well as fencing. The agreement includes clearly defined voluntary conditions, limited use to counseling center and related services consistent with section twenty one point oh five. The use is compatible with surrounding land uses and does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, compatible with section twenty one point oh five C. The agreement includes termination and revision clauses found in section twenty one oh seven. That allow the township to revert zoning back to agricultural residential conditions if the conditions are violated or if the use ceases for twelve consecutive months. The proposed rezoning does not require any variance or special use permit beyond the scope of this agreement aligning with section twenty one oh six. The proposed conditional rezoning agreement brings the property into alignment with the zoning ordinance, ensures the use remains limited and compatible with the neighborhood. And satisfies the requirements of articles ten, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, and twenty one of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, I urge the planning commission to vote in favor of the proposed conditional rezoning agreement and forward it to the township board. With a recommendation for approval and final adoption by ordinance amendment as required under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And article twenty one of the Millington Township Zone Ordinance. Please, planning commission, have any questions?
And I think. You noted elsewhere that the lawyer had reviewed these. And and approved his place, please approval on it also.
So in addition to my recommendation, you do have the full voluntary conditional rezoning agreement. That agreement comes with a copy of the zoning permit application. The site plan. The compliance document. And the layout of parking as is required by our ordinance. Those documents have been sent to the attorney and the attorney felt that they were. Favorable and accomplished the task of bringing this into alignment with our branch of zoning ordinance.
Thank you for all that background work.
You're welcome.
I guess the only question I have is, is why is this a recon uh, some conditional rezoning on the? Commercial side of it. Why isn't this being a permanent commercial use once this is done? Why are we doing a conditional where it's twelve or thirteen months of non-use it converts back?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Why are we doing this versus what?
It's you're they're signing a contract saying that. If it's since idle, that it converts back to agricultural.
That's a requirement of our or within section twenty one.
But why would we do it so? To me.
I'm just not sure I understand your question now.
My question is, is we're in this position because it was never switched to commercial.
I don't know that the intent was to switch just that parcel to commercial. It's not in a commercial district.
Correct, but back when it was built, the use of it was for commercials. So the so when it was originally built in seventies, it was built under. The perception of it was going to be used as commercial entity. So now we're going to do a conditional rezoning of it, be commercial. But yet if it stops. Being used as commercial, it converts back. But the entity itself in a whole is a commercial. It'll not. It can never be a home.
I mean, at some point, it might be turned into a number of things. I don't I don't know what.
Why would it go back to AR? Nothing will nothing that. Nothing could go into that size of a building for that size of a parking lot. That would be house agricultural use.
I can't speak to what took place in the seventies. I wasn't here for that, so I don't know.
Why are? Why would we have to zone it to commercial and leave it as commercial?
Because if you spot one parcel without adjusting the whole section, then that would be spot zoning and spot zoning isn't allowed. However, our ordinance does allow for a conditional rezoning agreement under article twenty one.
This is a good way to bring us current to correct a problem.
Seeing them against bringing.
You gotta correct the problem that this happened in the seventies or the issue that whatever they did or didn't do in the seventies. So we've got the issue now, and this is our legal way to fix it and follow the ordinances without being accused of a spot zoning or anything else. If, say, heaven forbid, the place burned down and they just didn't go on with it. Then it could go away. Then it still reverts back to agricultural and zoning. It it's the zoning is the issue.
Right.
Not not so much what's happening. Because what what is being asked for fits? The neighborhood and it's not.
Oh, I agree.
You know, it's not anything outside.
I'm just not sure. Maybe I don't understand your question. What would be an alternative to what we're doing?
The the alternative to me would be rezoned as commercial, neither alone, because if they went out of business. If they decided to go out of bit out of business in two years and decided, and then the building set idle. And then they were gonna sell it, but yet it went back to agricultural. Now it's gonna create. An issue with them selling it as a commercial entity. Now they're gonna have to sell it agricultural, and whoever comes in there is gonna have to come to the township, ask for permission to put a.
But with this agreement, they wouldn't be able to sell it as a commercial entity.
Right.
That will make it hard to sell later. Someone else to come in and want to operate a commercial business. I understand the whole spot zoning thing, but it's still conditional spots.
That's part of the conversation that we have with the property owner. And so we did discuss that at some point in time, if they decide that they want to sell. The business and they want to sell it to another commercial entity, that entity would then have to come in and do a similar agreement.
I mean, they're they're fine with that. Just to me, okay.
They've also been there a long time already and.
Well, I'm not saying they're going to.
They're not going.
Right, I don't think they're going.
Right. So with this.
They don't plan on it.
I think this is the good legal way to get us into their ordinance, so they can move on.
Does the planning commission have any other questions?
No, I was happy with what you.
I'll bring this really drastic addition, Tammy.
It's on the site plan. Which is here. So the addition is sixty to sixty.
Will that pose for any bringing digits per neighboring type of properties or anything?
I'm not an engineer, so I don't have any answer to that, but.
It's a drive here. Beginning over here, there's. Back there, we're getting admission. So there's no. There's no range on this side. This is driveway coming in. This is. There's a. Going to go over here with all the buildings on this side.
So as I'm I'm thinking the planning commission probably knows, we're responsible for the zoning. But we contract with the school accounting. Uh, they built to do building inspections, so we don't authorize the building itself. That's something that's done through the county. So I don't have the answer to your question.
I I don't think it would have an issue with uh, it's of issue. With drowning out the next door neighbor.
You just. Way to give you an answer to that.
I I understand. Thank you.
Sure.
I guess I'm not. I guess I'm not clear. When when this building was put up for the American Legion. That wasn't commercial property?
It's never been sold commercial property.
Go ahead.
That's that's not true. I like the TV, uh. The colony. And since nineteen seventy three, on the county side, it says commercial. And since nineteen seventy-three, on the county side, it says commercial.
It says commercial on the tax record.
They don't pay taxes. Yes, it pays, it says it on the tax record. Commercial nineteen seventy-three. Then when Jalen got it, it was still when he was running it out there, it was still zone commercial. These guys have to get a a a commercial license for the. So. Yes, I understand these guys back in seventy-three, somebody dropped the ball because registered deeds of the county says they got a commercial building. The township is saying they've got agricultural. So somewhere between here and there, it's been messed up, but.
Well, that's really hard to believe.
According to the company, that is a commercial building.
But the zoning has not ever been changed here. Like you said, there's a disconnect somewhere.
Right.
And this is one way to fix that. By doing a conditional rezoning.
After talking with our attorneys, this is the only way to fix that.
I've got one other question.
Sure.
Who said spot zoning was illegal?
Well, it certainly wasn't me, Joel. You'd have to do your research to define.
I have.
Who did that?
And it's in there.
It's in.
It's not recommended.
Right, but it's not illegal.
So it's not illegal. You can spot zone. But they highly recommend you don't.
Okay.
But to say that it's not legal.
Against high recommendations, we.
Well, that depends on what the situation is. Which is is what you have here.
This is a remedy to fix it.
Right.
So I mean, this is what they need tonight and.
Okay.
It all looks good to me. I mean, I just had a question of why they had to sign the conditional. You know, that way we never have, no, someone else doesn't have to sit up here and still throw. Still have conditions on piece of property and same questions be asked, well, why is this piece of property always been used as commercial use and it sits as A R?
I I agree with Al.
This gets them what they need.
No, just clear, Kate and no, Tammy, I think really. Section twenty-one point oh seven. Is the actions that are taken if. The applicant had certain requirements they need to fulfill within, I'm just gonna go six months, okay? Just throwing that off. And a year from now, you hadn't done it. That actually gives us a right to revert it back to A R.
What I read.
Yeah, so it's it's really.
Termination and revision clauses in compliance with section twenty-one point oh seven. That allow the township to revert zoning back to A R if conditions are violated. That's.
That's what they're signing. So, okay, is anything else? Oh, thank you, Mr. Zerfor, everything done.
I I make a motion to approve this.
Well, we gotta go through the rest of the steps.
Why?
Well, you gotta go through the rest. Next is.
All right. Couple more hours.
No. Public comment on this issue.
Yeah, I'll read. Robert Loomis, address fifty-eight sixty-three West Millington Road. I've been by New Light probably a million times. I live a mile west of there. And I just wanna say Rick's doing an outstanding job out there. And people I know has dealt with him, said he's top notch. And I think if we don't do something for him, I think it looks bad because we're trying to attract businesses. And for what Rick's going through now, that's been done fifty-two years ago. We dropped the ball on that, not him. So I think he deserves our attention to correct this problem. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so there was a letter sent in. I'm gonna read it. Uh it says, attention, Millington Township Planning Commission. Rezoning of the New Light Child Family Institution property from agricultural residential to commercial. Thank you. Uh. Robert Opperman. Uh Millington Residence fifty-three sixty-nine West Millington Road.
I'd like to speak of that a little bit. I called him, talked to him about it. He is big, he he had two concerns mainly. This is the increased traffic flow. Uh. The road has become so busy. Uh. He he just feels that it would increase traffic. Also, the other thing is those the traffic on this road. Exceeds the speed limit all the time. He's tired of no police. Protection or the lack of police protection or to regulate the traffic safety, but. I mean, that that anywhere in the township or anywhere and you know, anyway. Them were the his two largest concerns. The third one was wasn't gonna raise his taxes. And I talked to him about it. I spent on the phone forty-five minutes with him and then his neighbor called me and spent another forty-five minutes with me to talk about it. But. That was their his concerns. The neighbor, by the time he was done, he was not. He understood why they they wanted to move in this direction and he really didn't have an issue.
Good, thank you for reaching out, Tom. I'm gonna close public comment now if there's nobody else. Good, thank you for reaching out, Tom. I'm gonna close public comment now if there's nobody else. Close the public comments. You know, close the.
A second.
Sport highs.
Bye.
Hi.
And I make a motion that we open planning commission meeting.
Second. So the first one is the new like child family institution calls all conditional rezoning of the property for agriculture residential to commercial partial identification. In Millington Road, Millington, Michigan. So you guys. Is there any concerns issue? With anything here, you guys. Does it meet the criteria for?
So Tammy has gone through and noted all the courses that it does meet in in our ordinances and getting the lawyer's opinion. That their agreement is proper.
Would you do have a copy of?
Yep, it's in here and they voluntarily turned it in. Um. So unless there's more of an issue, I know that we accept the proposed conditional rezoning agreement. And the site plan presented from New Light Family and Child and Family Institute. At five three nine seven Millington Road, Longton, Michigan. The parcel number. Zero one seven, zero one seven, zero zero. One six zero. That's zero zero and forward it to the township and we recommend their approval. They have to have the final review of this.
I would, I mean, I, the discussion I have on, I wouldn't mind adding to that amendment since it was actually. To be zone commercial in nineteen seventy-five. Can I correct?
You looked at what?
Well, we don't know that because we don't know what they were planning in nineteen seventy-three. We think that maybe. But maybe they, I I don't feel comfortable adding that to mine. This covers it. For what we are doing today, we can't. Read minds of the people in nineteen seventy-seven.
But it at least puts all the history to me. I look at it, it was at one time supposed to be zone commercial. That's. A lot of evidence that says we're doing the right thing. And that's, that's why.
Discussion becomes part of the minutes. So reported.
As long as it's really definitely recorded, because that's why I support it is because it was. To be. Zone commercial in nineteen seventy-three and it did not happen.
And it reflects that at the town at the county level, right?
Right, yes.
Can I say it appears that it was to be zone commercial? I I you know, we don't know what they were thinking back then. We were all kids.
Does reflect.
But it appears that. The township. At the time.
Did you say it's still, is that it?
At the county, at the county level.
Hmm.
They show in their books, that's a commercial building.
So it doesn't appear it is.
It's it's just, it's not right. I mean, if you do this, you need to get to the county, make sure that's what it is, but I wouldn't. So the registered deeds with this number and it it comes up commercial, I give it to the board. When I was up there with the township board, it showed this commercial. Through the county. So it's been used commercial also. Yeah, it's always gonna use as commercial, yeah.
And I and it's during discussion, asking over that it appears that the township at the time. Meant to have it be commercial.
Okay, is that your motion?
It's not a motion.
Discussion, I mean, I'm sorry.
At least it should be, yeah, I just identified.
That that would be reflected in the county's records. That would be reflected in the county records.
But this property's been commercial since nineteen seventy.
Hey, I mean, one note, as we go through a lot of these, I see we got a lot of signups. This would be something that does not need to go to the Tuscola County Planning Commission.
No, this is not a zoning ordinance amendment. So this is not, so assuming that the board, the motion's been made, assuming that the board votes to make that recommendation. Um Dr. Watkins, who's here tonight, would sign a date. The chairman would put the public hearing date and the recommendation from the planning commission would be recorded. By your secretary and then this would be passed to. The township, I mean, once this section's filled in by you, this would be fast. This would be fast, excuse me, to the township board and then the township board completes the backside. And the agreement's moved.
Is there any more discussion on this?
I made the motion.
To approve it?
Yeah.
I'll second it. Henry O'Callaghan. Matsky?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes, that was Jess.
The next one on the new business is a parking complaint investigation by Paul Dudley, short-term rental slot located at seventy-six fifty-five Osborne Drive. So. I see this is on this. I have. So his slot is being. Appealed.
Not for parking, but yes.
Not for parking, but it's being appealed. I'm not sure what appeals is based on, because I've asked numerous people and I never get an answer of why it's being appealed. So I don't understand. Why we would even. Look at this if it's being, it's slup in a hole is being appealed.
You can table it and then somebody to it after the zoning work.
That's just dismissive to my, because I could just show you the. It's it was in the original permit, so that's why. Well, the complete, the original permit showed that the parking was allowed on Stara, so that's where I'm not sure why it's even been. Why the plane's even there and then the cars that were there were not even my cars.
They're like, we're out of order, right?
Right.
So just, I guess if we if we would table it, which I I understand the reasoning for that. Um. Then Paul would actually have more time to pull his data together. Do you have all the documents you need?
Right, I'm just hoping to get it resolved tonight.
I I I don't want to, I don't even want to look at it at it until the Z D A is done, because if the Z D A goes through for some reason. They appeal his slot or they send it back to us. To look at something or to modify it or to go back through or something. I would rather just wait and do it all in one. To look at. Buying the parking and stuff. I don't, I really don't want to do something now and then. Have them appeal his slot for some reason and send it back to us for us to go back through.
So Tammy, the packet that you put together tonight, was that pa- full packet sent to Paul Dudley?
No.
Yeah, that's annoying frustration is I don't ever get a copy of the.
Okay, well, it was my understanding you didn't have a copy of the complaint and if you did have a copy of the complaint, that can be obtained through the.
Yeah, and I also didn't even know there was even a complaint, so going to the planning commission, then to the township board and back to the planning commission. And I have no idea any of this is going on until Ed called up one day and said, how come you're not a planning commission? And said, why should I be? And go, you're driving a plane and you're parking. So I have no idea any of this has happened, so I just scrambled through all this research and asked. From now on, whenever it was planned against, you know, anybody in the township. That there's a lot of, you know, that we get a copy of it and you can tell us what's going on and a lot of times it can just get resolved outside of the planning commission. This would have put up, because these weren't even my cars that were complaining about. They were the neighbor's cars. So I got a picture of it and none of those three cars were mine. And I even told them they weren't mine, but the complaint came in anyway. So I think we could always have it just you and I just talking and it would have gone away.
So the planning commission has a full accounting of the conversations that should play as relative to the complaint that was included in the packet that was.
We're 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 going too far with this. I want to make a motion to table this until after the Z D A does whatever they're doing. I'm not even sure what. They're appealing or what their appeals is based off of. So until they do whatever they're doing, I would like to just table this until next month.
I second it.
Just for the simple fact, let's see what's going on at the other. Because I don't think this complaint, I'm being told is, isn't why it's being appealed. It's not going to be appealed over for.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to make a motion, we table this until next month. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Madski, you got any more discussion on this?
Um, I guess the only thing, can. Tammy, can, is there any issue with Paul Dudley getting your recommendations?
He's, well, I mean, any, any resident can file a FOIA with the office and obtain any copy of any public record, so I mean, there's never an issue with that.
So. Let's us move on with this because that's a separate issue. The township already started to address that in your last meeting about people not being notified when they're put on the agenda. Or issues.
That's not happened to me.
So. The township is already having an issue with it and obviously it's at every board level. It's not, they're not being notified. So let's, we have a motion on the table. I'd like to do. Vote. Madsky?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
That was Jess, Opperman.
Table it in.
Table it in, yes.
Yes.
That's.
Well, that's alright, thanks. Number five, guys. Cardinal Pizza's sign site plan review.
Me again, are you ready to remind me?
Go ahead, please.
I recommend the planning commission approval of the attached zoning permit for a new commercial sign located along M fifteen on the Cardinal Pizza. Um I've provided the findings and the justification, site plan requirements, the setback clients, the primary and secondary sign classifications. The size compliance in terms of the overall square footage of the sign. I gave you details on all of those to demonstrate that they are in fact going to be compliant. In addition, it also shows on the backside the lighting and motion restrictions. And the agreement on the maintenance of the signs, so therefore. You have all of the evidence to demonstrate that this would be compliance with our ordinance.
So the size of the sign is size compliance. Is under the hundred square feet, okay?
So section fourteen point oh six I two limits the principal sign to one hundred square feet. The proposed M fifteen sign complies with that site limit. Section fourteen point oh six I four limits the secondary sign to forty square feet. The existing Ellis Road sign meets that requirement. So the Ellis Road sign would be considered their secondary sign, the M fifteen would be considered their primary sign and as a result, it needs both of those sides for questions. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Any other questions on the compliance?
They're far enough back from M dot not to have to. Go through M dot on any of this.
So I can't speak to um how far they have to be off the railroad. That was something that the property owner and I had a conversation about. That's not something that I have. Any jurisdiction or qualification to establish. That's something that he would have to go. Uh through a different entity to obtain permission of.
Have you done that with the real life?
It's impossible.
Is that, is that here on your road? I got context for here on.
What I did is I went to my property line and brought it back away from there.
How many feet?
About forty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
And that might be plenty adequate, but I do have some phone numbers from here on. They're very diff- some of those road companies are very difficult to get all out. They're not. Hereon's very, much easier than like CN. But if you want it before you decide to put the sign in, it it's granted to you.
He needs our setback requirement, so that's where I'm.
Will be eliminated?
Able to make that. I'm sorry.
Will it be lit up or eliminated?
Um, so in accordance with section fourteen point oh six D E and F, the proposed sign includes no flashing, rotating or moving carts. And any illumination will be directed away from the roadway and residences to prevent glare.
Yeah, considering the railroad tracks, you're a long ways off fifteen.
Any other questions regarding compliance? Alright, then the proposed sign satisfies all applicable provisions under section fourteen point oh six, including dimensional requirements, location restrictions, lighting controls. And overall compatibility. With the M fifteen sign designated as the principal onsite sign and the Ellis Road sign designated as a secondary onsite sign, the total signage remains within the permitted limits. Accordingly, I recommend that the planning commission approve the signed site plan and the associated zoning permit as submitted.
Is there any discussion on this?
Sounds very similar to what we did with the church down there.
Yeah.
Another session?
I don't have any additional discussion.
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented by Ms. Dunzer.
I'll second it.
Roll call, opman.
Can I, can I put the wording this way? It's easier for me in my notes. That you. Uh, to, to approve the request, sign request from Tim and Gretchen, the walls for pizza and then the parcel number. And as it satisfies all the necessary provisions under section fourteen oh six of Millington Township Ordinance and has a clear and acceptable site.
Yes.
I don't want to complicate things, but are they concerned about M dot? Right away?
He's too far off.
I think, yeah, with the railroad.
I wasn't thinking about the railroad, how far it was off until. Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Got it?
Yep.
Roll call, Madski?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
That was just.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, we want to move on to old business. So we have a blight ordinance amendment wording review.
So the planning commission asked me to take the building code ordinance and the blight ordinance. To several different entities for review. Um, I'm bringing this back to you, having done that. So. Uh, Daryl Oliver from the Tuscola County Safe Bill and Troy Euick, who is the Vassar Township zoning administrator. Uh, reviewed this, but did not get back to me with any recommendations. The township attorney did recommend a few slight revisions to the blight ordinance for clarity and those revisions have been given to you. They were shown in red.
And we're black and white.
Oh. Well, in the email, they would have done it red.
Would be in bold letters?
Yeah, they're bold letters. Like two and three and, yeah.
So from the blight ordinance, you got section two. A, two and three were. They're bold. And then I guess you got. Are, are, is that the lawyer's recommendation or what's the?
No, um, I. Because my changes, I mean, I can give you my copy if you want to look at it now. My changes are, my recommendations were in bold. And so I've, I don't know on your copy if. It shows up. In similar shade or not.
It's dark.
Um, but. Like. I don't know how to, I, I, like I said, I can give you a copy. It was, it was sent to you in the email with the red.
So, so what, what area would be read from the lawyer? Can you give us that information?
I can give you a copy of what he sent me.
I believe like number one, the start of all brothers, three, 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 materials, garbage. Favorite gloss cans.
Through the chair? I would just ask for my copy back, please.
Ed, look at it, face it up. Yeah, the changes are already been made in there, so they're.
Oh yeah, this one is, the red has been taken out, but he crossed out, isn't it?
That unit is very clear with the blight ordinance. Intense, what light is. And it should make compliance easier. For enforcement, I guess would be.
Well, the reason that these ordinance amendment revisions were brought to you initially was based on the recommendation from the Tuscola County Administrator's office.
Yeah, I remember that. They recommended we do this so that they can work together.
But for the enforcement part.
That's the word. Well, that's what was pointed out to us is that we didn't have an ordinance that referenced that.
We had something that referred back to nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-three.
No, this, this one, well, yeah, for the other one.
More so, we actually have nothing.
Number one, um. So bold number two, uh, number three, any structure found in unsafe, open cell, as an evaluation of Michigan building code. As adopted by the township. Would be odd, right? Or enforced through the county building department.
That's next on the hit parade is our building code. Which we don't have yet, but we're working on so the two can work together. That's why it's referenced like that.
So are we, we're going to get into the building code business here at the township and, and enforce building codes?
No, you have to read the other ordinance. It, it explains what we're up. There's three documents here that all cross-reference each other. Light ordinance, there are the building code ordinance, and then there's the civil interaction policy.
I'm not opposed to some of this, but this makes me a little bit, little bit nervous about this would be. Us as a township maybe getting into it, making a determinant, I say, and safe. What structures say, what designs say? What is it up to a building code? Um, when it was up to a building code from nineteen seventy-three and we're talking two thousand twenty-five, the codes have changed uh, immensely. And we're going to say that this is no longer safe because it's under the codes of two, uh, nineteen seventy-three and we're under the codes in two twenty-five. I just want to make sure.
That's the point, we can't use that.
We're not going to want to get into that.
Yeah, we can't use that code.
So the township has contracted with Tuscola County to address those issues in our behalf.
Safe bill will be the one that says.
Safe, safe bill says that.
From the pony. And they're the ones that'll come in and say if it's safe or not. They'll do all that responsibility for the township. It's been contracted to do that.
Do you have paperwork about how they're going to do that or?
We do have a contract with them. I don't have it with me here. There's a contract that the board has signed with Tuscola County Safe Bill. I don't have, I don't, I'm not in possession of that contract at.
I think it should be reviewed. Through me, we don't get that. I mean. I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to it, but I would like to know what you voted for of safe and unsafe.
You're welcome to table it and then ask the township office for a copy of that.
I could, I.
Your, your issue is nothing to do with the blade orders.
No, I, I, I just. This right here, when I seen item number three. Uh, here about states and I don't say. It's the most instructors in this town. So when you drive by and you're shaking on the way, it's uh, dilapidated a little bit here. Are we gonna, we're gonna determine, well, I think it's now dilapidate to the point we need to.
We have two properties within the township that we are in the process of going down that road right now. Um, they will ultimately be brought to the board on Monday with a recommendation that we have Tuscola County Safe Bill pick up that investigation file. Because I'm not qualified to make those decisions.
Are those occupied?
They are not.
And, and what, so, so now they're abandoned, probably end up on a tax sale. How, how are their fees?
I'm trying to understand.
Fees for doing this?
Tuscola County Safe Bills fees?
Yeah.
I, I don't, I'm not privy to that information. That would be a contract between. The board and Tuscola County Safe Bill.
I know Tuscola County has, uh, they're a third party for Tuscola County. Their fees for getting buildings. Are. Astronomical fees. I can just see some fees I've recently drawn. Almost five thousand dollars to build a pole barn and a house. A lot of townships, it might be fifteen hundred bucks. Safe bill charges you five thousand dollars. And that don't count the plumbing and electrical and some of these other things. They're very absorbent fees. I don't know if they're going to charge, charge this township those type of fees. But I'd like to know about it before I vote on it.
I think that's a whole different conversation.
But I think it's part of the conversation, because if they're going to come in here and they're going to dictate what's safe and unsafe in this community. I want to know how, what, how they're going to do it. What type of standards are they going to hold these properties to? And how much are you going to charge this community for?
Well, they do.
That's me. I'm only one person up here.
I guess we come to a township board and voice your concerns and say they're the ones.
Tonight because they want me to vote on.
But to get anything done on your concerns, the township board is the one that voted. That's who's going to do it for us. So that would be a good place to raise your concerns.
So you're the liaison for the township board that sits on this board. What did they say?
It's been a couple of months and I can't tell you.
Because the contract's on file that you.
Yeah, so you can come in and even look at the contract that we voted on. And then if that raises question, might answer your questions. If it doesn't, come to the meeting Monday and voice your concerns.
I, I just don't know what it's, what's in the package, okay? That's the only reason. Question would be, it's maybe.
I'm, I'm pretty sure the township was.
I mean, they were very thorough. I don't know. I'm just asking questions. That, that just come out, that just.
You could totally make a motion to table it to do their research and come back to it.
That's, that's me.
Yep, my other discussion is, and we had discussion last meeting. Is. We are amending an amendment. And the amendment is actually ordinance ten dash one, which implies that the amendment was made. Twenty ten and we're actually making the amendment in twenty twenty-five. I definitely feel that. We need to be pulling a new. Amendment number for this and have this stand alone. And then what you do is you word it that. The new. Ordinance amendment. Would supersede or replace the.
It would rescind.
Rescind all previous, yes. So there is wording in here that does need to. Be updated also. Before we would schedule a public hearing.
Where did you say that was a reference to?
The top of the page.
Top of the page, blight ordinance ten dash one would be new. Um. Item. One. We would, it'd be a new ordinance, not amended ordinance amendment. Um, and then we would have to add the verbiage that this would supersede the uh, ten point. Or ten dash one old ordinance.
Well, and the planning commissioners had a conversation about redoing the whole ordinance and you could certainly incorporate this into that process. And then it would be part of the ordinance, not an ordinance amendment as a standalone, Jack. That would be an option for you to consider as well.
But. To redo all the ordinances. To redo the. Ordinance again, that's, that's a, a year process versus uh, creating an amendment. I think you want to create the amendment to move it forward.
I'm all in favor of moving it forward. I just want to be clear and transparent in what your choices are.
To answer your question, man, when uh, Seafill does get involved in uh, unsafe buildings. I think it is, there is a fee, I think it's a hundred dollars. They charges for East Ensign.
Okay. That, that is a two assortment.
Huh?
That's not bad. I mean, that don't.
I, I think that's. Call me on that, but there is a fee.
Any other discussion on this before we?
Yeah, so Tammy, are you saying this is your, the draft that you're giving to the board? To now update and move forward, or are you going to make changes to this draft? And bring it back next month?
These are my recommendations to the planning commission. The planning commission, of course, has the authorities to make any additional revisions that they deem necessary.
I think it looks pretty thorough and it brings us. Current. The important thing with these is it brings us current with Michigan law. She's even got the Michigan case law places noted. If you want to look them up and read the whole thing. But. You know, we're playing catch up.
Wants to add the verbiage that is going to replace the number and, and then rescind the previous. I mean, you are more than welcome to add that to the amendment before you bring it to the hearing. I don't know that you would necessarily need to bring that back to the board. I think you could present a revised version at the hearing itself. If you wanted to expedite the process.
Did you say you visited the township or another township and had discussion?
I was in correspondence with Troy, who was the zoning administrator in Vassar. He said he did not have any. He looked it over, but he didn't have any suggestions.
Was their blight ordinance like very similar to this?
I, I. It's online. If you want to take a look at it and your own comparison, you're welcome. I mean, I looked at it, but it.
Was it similar?
I think similar is subjective. I think mine is. Comprehensive. So.
So, I guess. I make a motion that. We. Hey, we'll vote on this tonight until the wording is updated to reflect a new. Ordinance amendment.
Couldn't you just write that at the top where you want?
Well, we also need to correct verbiage to say how it replaces the other. I want all the wording correct before we have a public hearing on it.
Do we need to make the corrections now?
That would be great.
Well, um, I mean.
Corrections still need to be made in order to retype it.
Right.
We got to move forward with it.
So I mean, I'm looking at, you know, you're, you're going to remove blight on top line, blight ordinance numbered. Ten dash one, ten dash one gets removed. That is not issued until it is final.
Yep.
Then under item one.
What are you replacing with the top? You got to put up there what it's.
You don't know that until it's approved. That's when we issue the number. The number's not issued until.
What is your issue with the ten dash one? What's?
Because it needs to be twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Blight ordinance near the front?
No, 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 it has to do with here. So it would be blight ordinance number, and I think you should just write it in.
Twenty-five.
Blank.
Blank, yes.
So instead of ten, it's twenty-five blank.
Right.
Twenty-five dash blank, yes, it's.
That's, that's explanation for that is that the ten tells you that this blight ordinance originated in two, two thousand and ten. So to demonstrate that this new ordinance is originating in two thousand twenty-five, you would update the number. From ten dash one to twenty-five dash blank.
Blank.
That number to be assigned once approved.
And that'd be the same thing for item. One. Where it says ordinance ten dash one. Amended. It's actually going to say. Uh, ordinance, and it should be saying ordinance amendment. We, yeah, what? Cause I, I go back in the past, don't we?
This ordinance shall be known as the Millington Township Blight Ordinance. It will now rate number twenty-five dash blank amended. And then there's a blank for you to put the date of its amendment.
And then we need to have the wording and I guess I was going to go back and see how I'd seen the wording in the past. Of how this ordinance then supersedes. Ten dash one.
You would actually, you could add it to that sentence. So this ordinance shall be known as the Millington Township Blight Ordinance number twenty-five dash one amended blank. This ordinance. Rescinds all prior blight ordinances.
But doesn't it say that back here at? Like page two on the bottom? Doesn't that cover that? Where it says inconsistent or in conflict. They are hereby repealed, so.
That's part of the repeal. Yep, ordinances or parts of ordinances of the township of Millington inconsistent or in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Yes, that doesn't affect.
To be amended, yes. Having the standalone.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that, but this, we don't need to add.
Be clear.
It's already in here is what I'm saying. And what you wanted to put in there is already in there on page two.
It is, but if he wants to add it as a. It is. But if he wants to add it as a standalone sentence, I for the amended date, I don't see an issue with that. This ordinance would rescind all prior blight ordinances.
Oh. It's kind of wordy then. Ordinance rescind.
This ordinance will rescind all prior blight ordinances.
All right, so from there.
And then under penalty, we would have to uh change ordinance number ten dash one to twenty five that blank.
You guys want me to go through this so you guys can? All right, you guys all read this.
Yeah, I've read it.
And I guess, Matt, are you comfortable? You want to do more research before we vote on it?
I, Matt, the only section you were uncomfortable is number three, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I. But. I was a little.
It could, knowing what we want to change now. Approve it with these changes here in front of us. We've got them all. I can read what he's said, make sure we got them covered.
Matt, you give me more discussion on number three.
You're pretty much a piece of, I guess, you know, I I don't think it would hurt to look closer. It does look very thorough. I I do see where it's very thorough, but I didn't know who was going to, I, it says that the state bill, you know, the town, they're going to dictate that. We've hired him. Um, I was concerned about the township getting in the business of making a determination of unsafe and safe. I'm still wondering at what code are they going to be governing stuff? If your house was built nineteen seventy three and people have not maintained it in town or wherever it may be in over the last uh um fifty two years. See, it's dilapidated to the point, you know, maybe that's what means. And maybe, maybe at that.
The real question I have is, just we go through and we find these homes or buildings unsafe. Deemed unsafe. Who dictates? How it's brought back up to code and what's considered safe? So now when we want to go sell this piece of property, this ranch style home, one story home has been deemed unsafe because they went in there and said it was unsafe. Are we starting from square one? Or is that home? Or that building? Going to have to be torn out?
You would have to bring it up to today's standards, probably with the building codes of today.
So now you have to get it. So now we're going to have to sell this property's house.
But the planning commission isn't in the business of deciding that. We make the determination of what is blight.
I said that, I just can't.
The homeowner or landowner, the person that owns it, has to make that decision if he wants to tear it down or bring it up to standard.
At their cost easily.
Right. Because that's not the planning commissions. We don't own the property. We're not going to do it. We just have to make sure that the neighbors are safe. That it's not going to catch fire and burn their house down, or that the rats are going to go over. We are dealing the issue of the blight. And the landowner then has to follow the ordinances or the decision uh with the state bill and everybody that comes in. And then they decide what to do.
It's a little concerning to me that you might try to force somebody into the building, bring it up to today's standard and that house maybe isn't worth.
I'll tell you, it's making certain. This is senior citizens that have been living homes that are pack rats and homes are full of stuff. And then they walk out there and they ruin the home unsafe and they condemn the home basically, because that's what they're doing is they're condemning the home.
Right.
Now you've just put that senior citizen out to the road. Regardless if her family comes in there and cleans it all out, exterminates their rats. Until she meets building codes, she no longer has a place to call home. And that's what we're really doing. And then that's what the cities have done in Flint and Detroit. They've gone through and they've taken their seniors. And I know the planning commission has no bearing on this and this has nothing to do with us. When I'm telling you, there's a bigger trick trickle fact. Sending somebody in there and inspecting your property. Because there are seniors out there. I know a few seniors in our city, in our township right now that their homes are being condemned because of the amount of trash they have on them. And they're seniors and they'll be put to the road.
Maybe we should be able to look at it and look at it a little.
But you gotta, I mean.
Maybe a lot of assumptions.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, those are what ifs. We can't.
There are not what ifs. They're going to be out there, but.
Well.
And if we have seniors who are living in homes that are that dilapidated, then that's probably a community concern that we should be addressing in some fashion, other than just letting them sit and stew in that blight.
There is no help out there for them. None.
Well.
The county health department won't even help them. And then there's no homes.
It has a town that they need to, we need to address.
That's a different issue.
But that's a whole different ballgame.
Doyle, do you have any comment? Ed?
Well, I think we ought to just table this and think about this for a while because I I have some concerns about item three under A two. Because uh oh.
If we.
Who's making the decision that it's?
Safe bill.
Safe bill. It's already been told me.
And township will say, you know, we would like you to inspect the address, whatever. Or if anybody, any address that somebody would turn in, they would come out and they will check this out, make sure it's up to, I don't know what standards.
And that's my problem.
Right. That's what concerns me. Cause there is some people in this community that only have so much money to make their house look so well, so good. And they don't have the money.
So.
They don't have them.
Mr. Thunder, Tammy, what does it, what would happen if we'd removed three? I'm just throwing that out. I'm just, you know. Cause it hasn't been part of our blight ordinance since uh two thousand and ten. We're adding it now.
Well, it makes us, it calls for us to, which is the reason why it's being brought to you now is because of the missing language, the what we don't have in our ordinance and haven't had in our ordinance is part of the problem that we're having with enforcement.
And that's why blight has not been addressed. Because there was no way.
Cause we haven't updated these.
Because we didn't stay current and updated.
So you don't.
I mean, I would love to wave a magic wand and give everybody a nice home, but the planning commission can't. We can't, but we can enforce what is blight and take care of it, get it cleaned up before.
Actually, your responsibility.
Yeah, this, this means we can catch it early and get it so that they're not in a house that's falling down around their ears. We can catch it when it, hey, it's getting messy. We're going to address it. Here's a, you know, you get your violation, we work with you or you ignore us. And now we can take steps to fix it earlier in the situation. That's how I see this. I'm not looking at the ones that are beyond hope.
See, I agree with you. I agree with you a hundred percent. I agree with you a hundred percent. The blight issue on the outside of a home, I agree with that. Hundred percent. Anything on the outside of a home that could be cleaned up should be cleaned up. But when it comes to the condition of the inside of the home and walking in there and telling them it's condemned. I have an issue with. That's my issue.
That it falls within the purview of the township is if the blight is so significant that it can be seen from the road. I'm not going into people's homes to conduct investigations. If there's blight that has been reported and upon an investigation can be properly documented from the public access of the road. So then it opens a case file and then the case file goes through the steps that are outlined in our civil infraction policy. If it gets to the point that we feel that the search is unsafe, open to trespass or in violation of building code or any other thing that doesn't fall within the purview of the zoning administrator. Well, that's when I make the recommendation to the board to have that contracted with just school economy safe built.
So that's not step one.
But it could be.
Well, but it's not. We're not responsible for the one inside somebody's house.
We don't want to do that.
Yeah. Well, I hope not. I really don't.
No, that's not what this is about.
Well.
And never has.
When you, when you put this in here that they'll be, you know, then inspected by the Tescola County Safe Bill. They're the ones that's going to determine if it's good or it's bad and what in what ordinance or what building code are we going under? Are we going under the, when it was built nineteen seventy three? Are we going under two twenty, two thousand twenty five standard?
Take a look at the building code ordinance that has also been, guys, these documents have been sent to you days in advance for you to read.
And it's open for discussion. We're having a discussion, right? We have a discussion about.
You're talking to me, we can collaborate.
I I have an issue with maybe, I'd like, I think it needs to be further investigated about what they're going to do with some of these uh um inspections myself. That's that's my opinion.
We've already got some blight complaints. And Tammy works with the people. And the ones that say, oh, okay, I understand. I'm going to work on this. And then they work out their solution together. And that is working in several instances. And nobody's home was condemned or knocked down or anything.
Fantastic.
And that is our goal here.
So maybe we're making a difference already without having that in there? Is that where you're coming?
No, it's only because.
We have two homes that are currently vacant that I have to address. I don't have the language to address it. Hence the reason for the proposed amendment.
And the magistrate has said we need to do it. And the lawyer has looked this over and any issues like that, he would end up being a part of.
So so. I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we table this until we get further in information and find out more about the more about the Tescola County Safe Bill inspections and codes of what the buildings prob, bring these problems up to. That's my motion.
Say again. Table it and tell.
Table it until we have more informations about the inspections that safe bill will be performing.
Do we need safe bill to come here and talk to us?
We we're under contract. We should know what we're under contract for. The contract.
Does.
So I'd like to review that.
Until we get more information about inspections by safe bill.
By safe bill and the codes that they will be determined uh determining safe and unsafe. I think it'd be good to review. Five second. I have a motion on the table. Maybe I'll start it.
We're done. But you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your motion on the table, let me do roll call. Masking?
Yes.
Butcher?
Yes.
Compliment?
Yes.
Stirzal?
No.
I'm going to vote yes. I just want more information on it. And secondly, hand.
So the building code ordinance is also on your agenda. I would just like to make reference to the revisions that Ed suggested with regards to the blight code, that those would be mirrored in the building code ordinance, so that instead of seventy four dash one, you would also have twenty five dash blank, whatever that would end up being.
Yeah. The question I got is under item three, it calls out section one eighteen is amended to read as follows. Which section one eighteen, I'm assuming is in a nineteen seventy three, seventy two, whatever ordinance that is no longer valid. I don't know what the previous wording in section one eighteen was to you compare to what the new verbiage is.
So. I don't have the full caveat by ordinance in front of me, but that sentence that's in quotes right there, come, that's in our current ordinance. So maybe we need to update the section.
Yeah, that's in our current, you're saying that is in our current ordinance, so that wouldn't need to be in here, man, you're saying.
No, you would just.
Referencing.
Do I just update the section?
Section one eighteen, uh number three, is that what we're talking with?
Yeah, there's, there's no one eighteen in our existing ordinance.
I'm not fooling. Do you remember what else? Under Mr. Thunder?
I don't recall. But I'm happy to research that and bring it to you.
I just like to find section one D.
Likewise, I would suggest that under part one that we would have the same recommendations as Ed suggested in this.
Part the uh short title, that sentence right under there.
So you would change from the seventy four one to the twenty five, whatever it's going to be, and then add the sentence about rescinding prior. I don't want to get you for a hundred of your writing, Luanne. You ready?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to have that up, like say, under item one, like you probably mentioned. And then also on the second page under item C calls out blight ordinance ten dash one, needs to be twenty five dash.
So all of those numbers will be twenty five, including seventy four dash one?
Yeah, that would be that I do.
Yep.
But the one at the end, that actual reference in C, that is a reference back to the blight ordinance. So whatever the blight ordinance number ends up being is what you would refer.
Yeah.
And then these two are paired with the civil infraction policy, but that is a policy and therefore it's not under the purview of the planning commission. It's under the purview of the board. But for transparency reasons, but I did give you a copy of that to review them. Or we want to update many ordinance numbers within that policy to reflect the new ordinance amendment numbers when those are by.
Is there any discussion of information?
So I guess I'd make a motion that this be tabled till we have the updates for.
I think you already.
And three already got.
And I think. Compliment did it and Butcher seconded.
Right.
Okay.
To get more information about inspections by safe like.
Hmm, no, no, we're in the building codes now.
You would need to pass on all of those things. Idea that they would probably get them. They reference each other. You can't pass one without the other because you're going to reference the ordinance numbers.
But if we're looking at, we are under old business, we completed item six. We're under old business, building code ordinance amendment wording review. So we're making a a motion for that item. That's where I was.
Is that number seven?
Yes. Yes.
And I say we just leave them together.
Well, I guess the one thing I was just trying to identify for the building code ordinance that we need to understand item three, section one eighteen, because I thought we already voted on the blight ordinance updates. That's closed, right?
We tabled it until the next meeting.
Right, I mean, we, yeah, we voted to table it.
Yeah.
Right. So then we should be voting to table this till we get.
Leave them together.
Yes.
Get it to the next meeting.
So your motion is to table the building code?
Yep, to have us more information on item three, verify where that's in our existing ordinance. And then we can make the other updates also.
One second.
Any more discussion?
Masking?
Yes.
Butcher?
Yes.
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 All right, moving on. Number eight, cargo shipping, connects, container, semi trailer, truck, value ordinance amendment.
Luanne, did you bring a a proposal?
No, I didn't. I thought this was all done.
No, you need to have a.
You voted at the last meeting what you wanted it to say. I thought you were going to draft.
Yeah, I thought you were going to draft it, Luanne.
No, I.
No, I'm sorry. I missed that quickly. I thought we had voted in.
Went to the minute stage.
It's all done.
Hmm. That one I wasn't drafted. Luanne said she would draft it in the last meeting.
I just moved to remove it. And we voted on it. And a public hearing will be set at a future date. Doesn't say anything about bringing anything here. But I can do that for the neck, for the public hearing. I mean, that's what it says. To remove those specific words, to just take those words out of our ordinance.
So so you have to draft an ordinance amendment? To know what the new wording would be. And then we can review that next meeting.
So I will do that. I will make.
You could still schedule your hearings.
Yeah, we're not adding anything, we're just taking those out and doing, we voted on the exact wording that's going in there, so.
But but we're still gonna have to identify what. What areas they're they're allowed?
All you're doing is removing one sentence.
Yeah. So we're gonna allow then con connects. Containers in Lake Residential? That's what you're saying? That's what I just heard.
You're re read that sentence as. Semi trailers, truck bodies, or other motor vehicle bodies or similar structures that cover the tonics. Are allowable structures in all districts except LR and MHP. That's the only change we voted on. And we all voted yes. So they're not allowed in Lake Residential or them.
Did you read it?
And so we're, okay, I mean, the only thing I was looking at is we were allowing. Connects containers. In R one. I'm struggling with allowing them in uh truck bodies and semi trailers. In R one, because I feel we don't have any real issues with them in R one today, and we're opening up something we shouldn't. Because those are not. I mean, where we have the issue is in agricultural. Um, commercial and industrial makes sense for your semi trailers and truck bodies, they don't belong in our one district.
Who said we had an issue with them though? We never had an issue, this, this whole thing came about because somebody wanted one, and he actually came through the front office.
But as far as in in past, we didn't allow truck bodies. And semi trailers in any district, now we're allowing them. And I just feel we should look at just allowing them in.
But the discussion we had at the last meeting was they're already there. We would have to go around and tell residents they have to.
How many are there in R one, that's where I'm at versus agricultural, industrial, or commercial?
I believe quite a few.
And I believe there's not.
Probably something.
Cause I drove around and looked.
It was brought.
Yeah, that's probably something you should have brought up when we were discussing and before we voted on this.
It was brought up.
Yeah, I thought, I thought.
I thought when you brought it in, we, that's where we would have a section that says. Areas that. Your connect boxes are allowed. And then also areas where your truck bodies and so on would be allowed or not.
No, we, when we went through that, this was the changes we made, it was supposed to be typed up, and that's how we were, we were gonna make minimal changes to it because they're already everywhere. Throughout the township. And then the two places that we all agreed on that we didn't want them was the only, there are only two places where we were gonna exempt them from. This was the literature that we all agreed on, we we had discussed the R one, and there was. Discussion on. There was different. Incidents is where they're already at. Where people would have to remove them.
Because I drove around, I haven't seen them.
The truck boxes and.
Not, not, not significant amount, so. But we're just opening it up now that. You know, now people in R one can pull in a semi truck trailer. And it's legal, where it hasn't been legal. I think we're taking a step backwards.
The planning commission already voted on it, is your suggestion that they revisit that?
Oh, I hope not, we need to get some of these things behind us. If it becomes a problem, we could readdress it. But the reason we're doing this now is because this has to be fixed so she can take care of. The few that are.
This actually doesn't have anything to do with me, this is like Alvin said, this.
There was a resident that came in that wanted a connect box.
Right.
And he asked for permission, and he was told he couldn't do it because it was against our.
Right.
Cause they weren't in there.
In connect.
Quite that poor soul, I'm sure.
And then we all discussed where they're at in the community, how many. We felt that were already out there, and the enforcement that would have to take place to in order to eliminate them in them districts, if we didn't want to include them districts in it. This, this was a discussion we had, and the thing that we all agreed on was the LR. We all agreed on that. Right. So.
But I'm just looking at why, I mean, again.
Because we already don't have an issue with it, but there is some out.
So we don't want to create an issue.
We don't wanna, I don't wanna create an issue is where I'm at. And I feel your, your, our, your R one district. We should eliminate. Truck bodies and semis.
But then you're creating an enforcement issue.
Right.
Because then you're thinking that I go property to property to investigate that, to let people know.
Why wouldn't you wait for a complaint? Isn't that what we're supposed to do, wait for a complaint? Not go out and police things.
What's the difference, Ed? Why would you want to have, and you're talking about drafting an ordinance to prohibit something?
We're getting off task here.
Way off task, thank you.
Ed. We, we did vote on this to be drafted up as.
I guess I was under the pressure, and I guess I didn't realize that we were allowing. I thought we'd have an opportunity to discuss where they would be allowed and what districts, and definitely we were saying nothing in R one. Or sorry, in Lake Residence.
Right, and and that's on there.
But are we opening up Pandora's box by allowing everything in R one?
The, the, I believe the.
I mean, you look at these, these properties, or then we better at least make sure we say you gotta have minimal.
Two. That's already part of our ordinance of, we're not gonna. Restrict the amount of acres they have.
So we're not gonna restrict the amount of acres.
No, but they still have to have the setbacks and the offsets in the yard and even have them.
And it's.
Put it in the front yard.
Yeah.
Follow the ordinance.
They have to follow the ordinance and all that.
Because that's already set, all we're doing is taking out the one. Sentence.
Oh, I don't live in R one, I guess I don't care, but. I just, I just feel we're. We're taking a step backwards.
Right, so.
We said the public hearing for the next meeting may be done?
Yes, type this up, get it set, let's move on, pass us.
Should I put in here the public hearing will be held next month? In September?
Yes.
Make sure that Jackie knows that so she can get.
So with that, Luanne. We need to have the. Amendment written, so when we put it in the paper. There, people can come up to the township hall and read the amendment. If they want to. So you gotta make sure we get that amendment. Published into the, to Jackie. Within fifteen days.
Yep, I'll get it done. I got one done overnight, so.
And while you have plenty of time for the next afternoon, we're gonna, we're gonna type up. The draft.
I will type up the draft, I will send it to all of you and Jackie. If you see something, for crying out loud, tell me immediately. But, I mean, it's very simple because you removed one sentence. So watch your emails, okay?
Done?
Yep.
We're gonna move on to number nine, PC bylaws updated wording review.
So what I did. And Alvin, you asked me to look at, originally we were focusing on conflict of interest. And look at putting the wording that's in the MTA zoning planning. Township planning and zoning decision making booklet, okay? Um, you asked me also to say, is there something else, we had just had discussions about uh. Meeting minutes. So on that page. In section nine. You'll see where I put in bold. Under meeting minutes. Minutes need not be word for word account, but should contain enough detail. To reconstruct the events of the meeting. Speakers should be identified along with major issues raised during the discussion. The draft minutes must be available to the public within eight business days after the meeting.
Isn't that already in there?
No. It's not in our, it's not in our bylaws.
It's written somewhere because they're always in there by the end of the week, or in this office by the end of the week.
Which great, I guess I haven't seen, okay, I mean.
Township.
Yeah.
Maybe. I think that's where you're at.
Okay.
The township board.
And then, um.
Here, the township.
Yeah, it, it. It would be easiest if all three of them matched, and I think the zoning board of appeals did it, we just read, we just did. The bylaws in January.
Right, and it's not.
Six months later and you're. If if everybody's was the same, that ZBAs, township, and ours, if we all match the same. There shouldn't be an issue. Cause all of these little extra things, they don't fit, it, it.
What doesn't fit, Luanne, this, this is verbiage right out of the MTA. We keep saying we need to.
But it's not in for the bylaws, it's out of their process, how to do things, process and procedures. So it's a difference in what our bylaws should match, the township bylaws should match, the zoning board of appeal bylaws. Then everybody's on the same page.
We obviously have a problem.
No, I don't think we do.
You don't?
No. I think we have personality problems that make this an issue.
Conflict of interest about township. I mean, you have a lawsuit right now.
What?
We're talking about conflict of interest. There's conflict of interest, it, it's okay for the board to have some guidelines to go by. And he wants them up, maybe.
Yeah, to reflect the wording of the MTA.
Additional don'ts if you have a conflict.
I don't think.
That's this wording right out of.
Updating them, I think her suggestion was that you update them to be consistent with the other boards reading, so I'll draw.
And we identified that the zoning board of appeals. Their bylaws do not actually reflect what they do. They don't say that you must. Remove yourself from the table and not vote, but they actually do that. That is what has happened in the past, and there's conflict interest, we're not doing that. So this puts it in writing what we should be doing. And it's in verbiage that matches MTA. What's wrong with using verbiage that match MTA?
Our old one had the verbiage from MTA.
No, it didn't.
So does the townships match this at all, or is the township?
I have not seen the township bylaws, I, I reviewed the zoning board of appeals, I had those.
So you looked at theirs.
And theirs does not call out that you need to remove yourself from the board. But they do it. So this would actually be.
They actually.
The one that followed.
They have an opportunity to, the board members to vote if somebody has a conflict of interest to remove them through some. The zoning board of appeals.
Our old one had reference to the zoning, Michigan zoning enabling act, and it came from.
Well, Luanne, Luanne, this, all I did. Is this is excerpts, I just gave you section one and section five.
Maybe that's why it didn't make much sense.
But these are just the changes that I'm gonna make.
To those two sections.
To those two sections, the rest of it stays the same.
That you're recommending.
Yes. So let's take the, again, meeting minutes. Available to public within eight business days. Uh. After the meeting and approved minutes must be approved. To the public within five business days following their, their meeting. Minutes can be approved or amended only at the next meeting after the meeting covered by the meeting minutes. And that wasn't in there, we, we had a big discussion three meetings ago. So now it's in black and white in our bylaws, what's wrong with that, Luanne?
Our meeting, when these things get approved, I sign, I put them on Jackie's desk, they're available when the meeting is over, as soon as the office opens up. Why are you making it sound like there's been an issue that these minutes aren't getting into the office?
I'm not.
Maybe I'm getting a little testy because all of this, you're acting like Luanne's not getting the minutes. To the playoff replace, these minutes are, these minutes are completed and in the office by Friday or earlier. And they are available. They have to go through the order. So you're acting like it's.
I'm not, I'm. All I'm doing is.
Been a problem. You're fixing a problem that it doesn't exist. We can go ahead and do this to make you happy, I just want it clear, there has not been a problem with Luanne's failers, okay? Will you? Backwest to that?
So why, why?
You agree?
Yeah, I agree, I, I, right, I thought they weren't being made available till our agenda items were sent out. Be honest with you, because I've never seen a meeting.
And it's by. Office by Friday, usually by Thursday. Some of these four hour meetings takes till Friday to get all the spelling errors.
Maybe.
But what's it hurt to have a document?
A commotion to table it, and then you can research with the other boards.
Why don't we get the townships? Draft of what they have. And take what you have. See where they're at, and then see if we can't correspond with the township, see if we can't. Maybe be similar. To what each board has. I don't have a problem adding any of that stuff, I don't have a problem voting for it, but I wouldn't mind seeing all three boards.
Match.
Maybe some miracle way, we could all get on the same page. To do the same things. Without offending anybody.
And I would add to that dialogue, Alvin, that I believe the ZBOA had their bylaws vetted by the attorney. So that might be something else that you would wanna consider.
They're very thorough. The ZBOA, right. How far off are these from ZBOA?
I don't recall the menace, the conflict, I, I, I see some of the similarities to it.
I don't have it, it, I, I've never seen an issue with the menace being turned in or anything, but I don't have an issue with that being in there because if someone else takes their seat and they're new to the board and they say, I'll be secretary. At least they know if somebody says, hey, you're supposed to have the minutes in. Right here it says in our bylaws, then they could go through and, oh, okay, I didn't realize that. So I don't have a problem being there, I've never seen an issue with it, Luanne, so.
I haven't seen an issue.
But. My thing of it is, is can we table this? Look at the townships and then, and see if, how far off we are, and then see if we can tweak it a little bit to mirror and make it. If not, I mean, I don't have a problem with making changes. Is there, is there any discussion with us tabling this and just seeing, I mean, I don't have a problem with any of this being there, cause at least people know.
Right, that's what I just.
Look at the bylaws, they know what they're supposed to be doing, how it's supposed to be done, don't have any issue with any of that.
And then if there is a problem, there shouldn't be a problem, I don't think there is.
There's not a problem, I've never seen a problem, any of that, but. Are you guys okay if we do look at that and see where they're at compared to us? And how far off, and then even with, I would like to have a copy of the ZBOAs, copy of the township, copy of ours, because if they are all completely different. I do think that I need to go to the township board and discuss, no, theirs with them, ours with us, where the ZBOA is at. And then see if everyone can't come to. Agreement on.
Yeah, cause the ZBOA's did not have that you needed to remove, no. Matt, on several occasions, you have done that. But if you look at your bylaws, it's not identified that you need to do.
Yeah, yeah, I, I removed myself, so are we okay with?
I'll be glad to make a motion that we table this. Uh, bylaws change until we can get a copy of the township and zoning board of appeal bylaws from Wellington Township. And use them for comparison if we.
And maybe the three boards can somewhat align or at least maybe align. And add this stuff for all the boards, so everyone's on the same page when stuff's done. Are you guys okay with that? Something, something's gotta be done, I, I don't disagree, but. Let's see if we can align everybody together, work together. We have a motion on the table, I'd like to support the motion and do a roll call. Any other discussion on this?
Doyle, you're the one who wanted the conflict interest updated, so.
Well. Our bylaws. Leave a lot out. On a conflict of interest. Because after researching it through two different books. When you recuse yourself from a, from a matter that you have a conflict of interest. You are not supposed to deliberate, discuss. Provide information. Nothing, you are supposed to be totally quiet, it's your responsibility. To declare that you have. A conflict of interest. Right, to begin, if, when a, when a matter is presented, if you have a conflict of interest, it is a board member's responsibility to declare I have a conflict of interest. They are supposed to step out of it. Now, the, the, the. MTA goes a little bit too far, cause they say you not only should. Should. Step away, you should leave the room, which I think is ridiculous. That's asking way too much. But. Right now, our bylaws have nothing in there. About. When you recuse yourself from a vote. About when you recuse yourself from a vote. You don't discuss it. You don't debate it. You don't deliberate. You don't provide information. You do not talk about it, period.
And I think the township.
And that's what we need in here.
And I think the township just touched bases on that, even going as far as not wanting any board member to speak at the ZBOA. On an appeals, even as a citizen comment, and I think there was.
I mean, I look at it the other way is, we could update our bylaws and then in parallel compare them, but then at least we got something on our bylaws. Cause we can always change our bylaws. I mean, they could be changed.
I, I don't, I don't wanna keep.
This, this does need to be updated.
So I mean, it may take us three months to get the comparison done. But why not put this in there and then we can do the comparison?
Three months? Why can't we do it next month? Why can't we have the three of them there? Come to an agreement on where we're, how we're gonna approach it, what we're gonna put in there, and then just type it up, and then finally, we need, be done with it. Why do we have to keep taking month after month after month? Why can't we do the recommendation, try to align them? If they're not willing to align with us, move forward with our bylaws for our board. I mean, I, 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 I'm tired of taking three months and everything if we don't like to.
That's where I'm at. We could put these in today, approve them today, and then we could still in parallel compare them.
I, I believe there, there needs to be a little bit more teeth in this conflict of interest too, because in the zoning board of appeals. The members actually feel, if they feel that there is a conflict of interest by an individual that sits on the board, they can actually vote.
That's still in there. That's in the other area. This is just what I added to it. Yeah, if you, if you pull up our conflict interest, that is in there.
That, that's good. That should be accurate.
So I already made a motion. It's on the table. It's already been seconded, so we'll do a roll call and move from there. Max King.
Abstain.
Butcher?
Yes.
Topperman?
Yes.
Mr. Zal.
Yes.
So, we're coming back with the other twos.
Who's doing it?
I'll do it. I'll ask the township the next meet, or I'll ask, I'll come into the supervisor, ask him for a copy of it. He'll be more than willing to give it to me. I'll get a copy of the ZBOAs, and I'll, we'll have a full copy of this. We're gonna sit down and just look at them and, at the next meeting, and it'll be on the agenda. Uh, old ordinance reviews.
So I just wanted, the sheet that's there basically shows that, you know, some of these items are in green. Which we really don't have any work to do on them, okay? That still leaves. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, about ten ordinance to review and update to figure out what we wanna do. How do we wanna go add those additional ten? I mean, I have been miscellaneous area for nineteen dash O one. Which was prohibited marijuana establishments. I thought that might become obsolete when we, uh, opted out of. Right? So is, is that, should that just say we were repealing that because that falls under, when we opted out? I mean, if, if that's the case, we could make a motion and say we repeal that because we opted out.
It should already be repealed, because I, I was part of when we amended the. Ordinances to allow it. Because one of the particular. Requirements that we put in there, which you had to be. Two thousand six hundred and forty feet from any school, church, or daycare center. Have a, a marijuana establishment. And it had to be in a commercial zone. So I know that there's an ordinance stating that.
You probably have a repeal, cause an ordinance number one hundred that rescinds all of these. At which point you would just have to decide which ones you wanna initiate and create any ordinance for it.
So are we saying amendment ten dash one? We take the position that it should be rescinded? Or?
Ten dash one is what I brought to.
Not rescinded, repeal already?
No, I don't think that was repealed.
Nineteen.
Nineteen O one, sorry.
Oh, nineteen O one, I would say it's been repealed. Because I know we, we have. Wording in there about. Uh, marijuana establishments and growing it. Because we had Dr. Chapin up here to give a statement on it tonight that we were making the decision. And I, I kinda put him on the spot, asking for his opinion on it.
But then I look at, we have seventeen dash O one. Repeals the Millington Township's medical marijuana ordinance number eleven dash one in its entirety.
Do you know the year it was that we opted out?
I remember those when, coming through, uh, when I first started, so it was probably. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? Robert Loomis, do you remember that? If we opted in or opted out, it was something we had.
My understanding was that commercial grows, if you wanted it, you had to hop in. If you don't do nothing, they're not allowed.
Right.
That was my understanding.
So we didn't do anything, so.
We didn't do nothing, so we didn't allow.
So that's where I'm looking at nineteen dash O one and seventeen dash O one. Do we say they are repealed?
Eleven dash one's repealed.
Yeah, but I had level one marked as green. So I guess I'd like to make a motion that the board. identifies ordinance nineteen dash one. And seventeen dash one as being repealed. Due to opting out of the marijuana.
Did you wanna add eleven dash?
Eleven dash one itself, if you read it, eleven dash one. Was repealed by order seventeen, so we don't need to do that.
Okay. Your motion is to mark nineteen dash one and seventeen dash one as.
Repeals. Yep, due to opting out of marijuana.
Got to know that the marijuana.
Marijuana production.
Our nineteen dash one and seventeen dash one had repealed due to the opting out of the marijuana production approval.
Yep.
Okay. Support.
Are the, are those the only ones that you wanna remove?
Well, we have a reason for now, so I think let's, you know, take, probably won't get through all ten. But I wanted, at least if we keep chipping away at them, right? So we're, we got two of them at least tonight that we're feeling we can repeal.
We have a motion and we have a support, correct?
Yes.
Roll call. Masking?
Yes.
Butcher?
Yes.
I'm with, yes, yes.
Yes.
Arizona, sorry. So those are the ones we're gonna handle on this, so this will be on the agenda for next month and then.
Yep, to look at some other ones, but we could maybe take the steps.
Moving on, number ten. Ordinance amendments. Well, we just did that, sorry, Dave. Number eleven, Millington Township zoning and shared report. Is there anything you wanna add to your report that you gave us? Well, good. Next planning commission meeting, guys.
Um, just a little bit of information before we move on.
Yes.
Um. We did, the board voted that planning commission or any board members. To go to the MTA meeting, educational meetings that they had scheduled in August and October. I think August conflicted with one of our meetings, but if you look them up, the board will cover the cost of the registration fees. Just let Jackie know.
Yeah, there's one in October, election in Frankham.
Yeah.
Yes.
And one in October is in Frankham.
Yes.
And, uh, they did not vote to pay for a new master plan. We're getting more information. If there's just a few things that can be done that Adam can suggest at a cost, we're kinda looking at that. Just to let you, give you the information.
One thing that I wanted to maybe frame up. So, Mr. Bell was, is that they're gonna want us to start looking at some of these slops. For the reviews on them and stuff. They tabled it on their end. Because really need to come up with a procedure and how to handle them and the way they're gonna be dealt with. And I think if. Any of you guys have suggestions on that, it'd be nice for you guys to go to the township board or send them a letter. Give them your opinion, how they're gonna handle. For them to maybe. Look at our opinion at this board level and how they're gonna handle, or how we can get a look on. It's just a suggestion that maybe we should look at the thought and maybe touch those as some of them. Is how we can work with them to come up with a way to, for. Because they haven't been looked at in a long time, if ever. And. It's something that they're going to end up moving forward with, I believe. So if you guys have an opinion, I, I think you guys might wanna put your opinion to them.
No, no, we made that's on, eight, September eighth.
Nobody take their folders in their paper or their pens. Which will ask?
Yes.
If you get a chance to. If you can, do your half copy.
What's that do? I gotta have Jack give all of it.
So we could.
Yep.
So, so you guys have on your. If they work with the slops and you guys are gonna stand on. You wanna do a review on slops that are in the township? yearly annual review.
Two months ago, not wanting us to touch it.
Just to make sure, people would even not forget it. It's reviewing the old.
We knew them and making sure that they were right, and the township board had them all down over it. And you're the one that told us we can't do that.
No, they don't want you to read. Yeah, you modified, you didn't just review what was.
Why review them if you're not gonna fix them?
To make sure they're compliant and then would go on until next year. When we can't do them all at once, cause there's too many. So it would just be done a little at a time until we get caught up. It's another case of fixing past, past oversights.
So we're not gonna fix nothing. We're just gonna waste.
I, I think if you're claiming something wrong, I think you should fix it.
Yeah, and that's.
That was the ones that we wanted to look at and review because there was things wrong with them, and we wanted to fix them. And she told us we couldn't touch them.
I think there was a difference in the perception that something was wrong. Some felt something was wrong, others disagreed.